All right, good evening. I now call the December 2nd, 2025 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Our invocation this evening is given by Brian Evans from Calvary Chapel of Northern Kentucky. Thank you, Brian.
If you would like to join me in prayer. Our Lord and God, in this season of joy and peace, we acknowledge you as the giver of that joy and peace in the celebration of your Son coming to earth as a child. A child that will grow up with the singular purpose of reconciling the world to yourself through his death and resurrection. Thank you for your great provision, for a great place to live, and for this privilege of gathering and self-government, for recognizing the responsibilities and freedoms it carries. We ask that all of our city officials be protective of the very precious and very expensive rights that have been guarded by brave men and women, and that they take these responsibilities to the residents of our city with the gravity and wisdom they need and deserve, without personal agendas or pursuits. That they be women and men of virtue, integrity, and with a heart of humble service. I ask that they have a Christ-like ethic in their service to the city. We pray for the wisdom for Mayor Fede, for our city administrator, Mr. Collier, and for, excuse me, our city attorney, Jack Gatlin, and for this assembled council. We thank you for their service. Grant them wisdom and insight for the needs of our citizens and a single mission in their pursuits to meet them. Hold them to a high standard of integrity, especially since you will judge them for every action. We pray for Chiefs Raider and Godsey, and for all of our first responders. We thank you for them also, and ask that you keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. We ask for your blessing upon all assembled here, our first responders and their families. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. And we pray for the agenda that is set before our city officials today, and please make clear to them what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Erlanger. I ask that they remember always, as your word says, to trust in the Lord and do not lean on your own understanding. In all your ways, acknowledge Him, and He will make your path straight. So let us not arrogantly think that we will do this or that in the coming year, but only as you will it. And so I ask these things in the most blessed name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you so much, Brian. All right, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you can take the poll, please. Mr. Cahill.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Ms. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Hermes.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Ms. Nicely.
Present.
Ms. Reckers.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore. Ms. Wilson. All right, thank you so much. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes for the November 4th, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Reckers, Mr. Farmer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Mr. Farmer, Ms. Reckers, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. Our first special presentation this evening is our Business Spotlight, and I'm going to pass it over to Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a special one for me. Karen and I are good friends. We've known each other for a long time. She's the Executive Director for St. Vincent de Paul of Northern Kentucky. They have been in our community for a long time, and they're investing even more into Erlanger. So really happy to welcome Karen here. Karen, do you want to say a few words before we tee up the video?
First, I just want to thank you all for being such a supportive community from which to be able to work and operate. St. Vincent de Paul is blessed to have been in Erlanger since 1969. So that's when we moved into our current location. And from that location, we've been able to serve thousands and thousands of people from Northern Kentucky. So we appreciate your support. We appreciate your material donations, I'm sure you've all made. We appreciate the most recent demolition grant that you also shared with us so that we could begin to build our new home that we hope to be in for the next 100 years in Northern Kentucky. So thank you very much. St. Vincent de Paul does so much more than run great thrift stores. The work that we do in reality is that we provide basic needs and emergency financial assistance to our neighbors who might be struggling to make ends meet. We love being in central Kent County, and Erlanger is ideal geographically from that perspective. Our footprint stretches as far west as Carroll County, as far as east as Bracken County, and as far south as Graham Pendleton, and we're right smack dab in the middle. We've been in this location since 1969, and we know we will continue to be here for the next 100 years because we know the need will never go away. In fact, we've seen it increase significantly in the last five years alone. Our goal is to try to support our community as best as possible, and we can only do that with continued growth. The way that people can get help from St. Vincent de Paul is we have a central dispatch line that is staffed at a call center based here in Erlanger, and so they can call 859-341-3219 Monday through Friday from 10 to 2. We have volunteers on the phone, so they pick up that call, they get your name, your address, your phone number, and then an understanding of the challenge that you might be facing. There's no act of charity foreign to the society. The thrift stores allow a flexible source of funding that allows to be creative to meet those needs, and so, you know, we're happy to do that. We always need people to help us work through material donations. We need people to help us in our call center. That's a huge help, and then you get to be part of this outreach that has so much impact in Northern Kentucky.
Just want to mention one more thing. I know St. Vincent de Paul is always in need of volunteers, of donations, of support. We picked them for the Business Spotlight right smack dab in the middle of the holiday season because their needs are greater right now. So please do reach out to Karen if you guys want to help in time, talent, treasure. I know they would very much support it and welcome it. So thank you, Karen.
All right, thank you, Karen. Thank you, Mark. All right, our next special presentation is our audit report. John Chamberlain is in the house, and so is our Finance Director and HR Director, Cara Kramer. I'll turn it over to you, John.
All right, it's a little hard to follow that, but okay. Mine's not going to be as wholesome and as interesting. Thank you very much. My name's John Chamberlain. I'm a CPA and partner at Chamberlain Owen &amp; Company, and we're a CPA firm right here in Erlanger that specializes in the audits of governmental entities. And so we appreciate the opportunity to do the work for the city of Erlanger again this year. I'm going to start off by thanking Mayor Fede and Mark, and Cara Kramer, and Chrissy especially, and Abby, who took really good care of us when we're here. I think it's important to point out there are two cities that I know of in Northern Kentucky where the Finance Director produces the financial statements. Yours is a 90-page set of financial statements that's in an annual comprehensive financial reporting format for the GFOA. There's two cities in Northern Kentucky where the Finance Director produces their own report, and Erlanger is one of them. And so you should be really proud of that. Cara does an amazing job preparing that report, and I just have nothing but good things to say about that. So kudos on her and her department. I'm going to start off by grabbing the thing that Mark handed me. And we've given what's called an unmodified opinion, and that means that after we've done our audit procedures, we feel like that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that's the highest opinion that we give. As a part of every governmental audit, we do a review of internal controls. We want to ensure that your riskiest assets are protected and that you have appropriate segregation of duties, that you have appropriate financial reporting, internal financial reporting, and you have, in our opinion, had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls to report. As a part of every governmental audit, we also review compliance, compliance with Kentucky revised statutes, compliance with grant or debt agreements, federal payroll taxes, SIRs contributions, that type of thing. We also noted there are no noncompliance issues to report as well. We did provide a governance letter to council. It's a letter that's required by our profession to communicate directly to you as the City Council. There really shouldn't be any significant issues in that letter. We made no unplanned audit adjustments, and that's another tribute to Cara and her staff that we didn't find anything that we really needed to adjust. We do make a standard planned material adjustment every year to adjust your pension liabilities and the associated deferred inflows and outflows that are related to that, and your OPEB or other post-employment benefits. So we did make about a $1 million change to reduce pension liability net of the deferrals and a $1.2 million to reduce your OPEB liability net of deferrals. So those are good. They're going the right way, and I'll show you that again here in a minute. Your financial statements that I alluded to earlier, this 90-page monster here, your financial statements last year was submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association, and they give an annual award for excellence in financial reporting. And so the 2024 did receive that award, and we believe your 2025 report will receive that award again this year. We provided no management comments. That hurts my heart a little bit, but no management comments to provide. And the city did make one prior period restatement, and it was a fixed asset depreciation correction of $446,000. And I want to explain that a little bit. Number one, it's not a cash. It doesn't run through your budget. It's depreciation that runs through your government-wide financial statements. So it's not really something that, you know, affects you guys on a daily basis. It's, like I said, it's a depreciation number. But a couple of years ago, I suggested to Cara that she, that you adjust, that you put your fixed assets, you were keeping it in an Excel spreadsheet, and it really wasn't working for a city of this size and complexity. And it was inducing some error. It was a really cumbersome spreadsheet. And, you know, you have $48 million in assets that were being depreciated, some as long as 25 years. So you can imagine, you know, the errors that could be induced. So I suggested to Cara, you know, maybe that they should look into a fixed asset tracking system. And so in 2025, she assigned that job to Chrissy, and Chrissy worked really pretty much a Herculean effort to get your fixed assets into that system. And that depreciation adjustment is a net adjustment that's a result of putting all that information into that system and cleaning that up. And I just really applaud them. I appreciate Cara's leadership and Chrissy's effort to finish that project, and it's just, that's an indicator of the efforts your finance staff is going through to provide accurate and timely financial reporting for the city. And I really appreciate that, and we've seen in Northern Kentucky and some other cities where that's not been the case, and the fact that you're jumping through hoops like that because that was, I mean, she put weeks of effort into that. And now it'll roll forward. It'll be easy from year to year, and we really want to applaud them for that. Let's look at some actual numbers here. The total cash for the city decreased by about $581,000. That's the green, so it went from 1908 to 1902. And then investments decreased about $163,000. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends, on the rule of thumb, to have about three to six months of operating expenditures available in cash. And the city, for the city of Erlanger, three months would be about almost $7 million, or $6.8 million, $13.6 for six months. You have about $19.2 in cash, $4.3 in investments, $23.5 million total on hand. So you have right at just over 10 months' worth of operating expenditures on hand. So very solid cash position. Now, I want to point that out, you know, it looks unimpressive, quite honestly, just slight dip in cash. I want to point out that you did $7.7 million worth of capital asset improvements this year. So, and your cash dropped $500,000. That can't be overlooked. So, and that $7.7 million is going to come up again a couple of times. So, you know, your Public Works building that you completed, but also Silver Lake Park, Sherburne Park, Circlewood Drive, Kennebou, Howlum, Hayden Place, police fire public works vehicles, all of those things this year, and a $500,000 drop in cash. So that's a pretty amazing, it's pretty amazing work there. Your citywide debt comparison, the yellow, your current liabilities, slightly more than last year. We did, Cara did recognize some opioid revenues as deferred revenues. The national opioid settlement with all the drug manufacturers for all the opioid problem that we had, the city's going to be receiving about $1.2 million total over, I think it's a 17-year window. They know exactly how much each company is going to provide, so we can actually recognize that in your financials as a deferred revenue and a receivable. So she entered that in this year as a revenue and a receivable. The pink, which you can't really even see there, is just the current portion of your long-term debt. That's your compensated absences for employees. That's an estimate that's due in the current year, about $220,000. The red, your only long-term debt, is the long-term portion of your compensated absences, so about $366,000, and that's very similar to last year. The taller, they should be orange bars, that's your total pension and OPEB liabilities, and you see just the liabilities themselves dropped about $400,000 from last year. These are measured at June 30th, 2024, so they're about a year behind. And since they involve an investment portfolio, the stock market performance is obviously a very important factor in that investment portfolio. So as the stock market is up, your investments are more valuable, your pension and OPEB liabilities decrease. So that's, you can see there, your total pension and OPEB liabilities have been decreasing pretty rapidly. And I pointed out to the mayor and Mark when we met earlier to review your financials that you actually have a net pension asset in one of the categories. So that's kind of, that's kind of interesting, that they're not liabilities any longer. Other post-employment benefits, it's really, it's really the health insurance portion of your retirement for employees. Thank you. Good question. I'm sorry, I use that term. It rolls off a little too easily. This is the balance sheet for the city. So you see it's broken down between your general fund, your capital asset funds, and some non-major funds. But again, about 20, right at $29 million is what that sums to in total assets. You see that 19 in cash and $4 million in investments, plus some accounts receivable, and that's the opioid settlement receivable, that $956,000. You can see that there, too. About $4 million in liabilities, so 29 minus 4 is the $24 million in fund balance. Some of that is restricted for various, you know, police forfeiture funds are restricted, TIF and park funds are restricted. But there's about $23.1 million of what we call committed, and those are not really unrestricted, but they're committed, the things that the council has committed for particular purposes. So your capital asset funds are committed, your emergency reserves, your resilience fund, and then there's the unassigned fund balance of $10 million. So you have about $23 million of funds that you have, let's say, to play with. And that was a very similar, I think it was about $24.3 last year, so very similar number to the prior year. Revenues versus expenditures. Total revenues right at, let's see, right at $26 million. Total expenditures, about $27 million. So I'm going to have to, I'm going to check that number. Something doesn't look right there. Yeah, total revenues, 26.29. Yeah, that's last year, just pointing at the wrong one. So total revenues, 26.9. That's the, that's the green, right at, right at the 26, right at the $26 million mark. So we had a deficit of expenditures over revenues, about a 1, for about a $1.3, one, right at a $1 million loss, sorry, compared to about a $1.4 million gain in the prior year. Revenues decreased by about $1.9 million, and almost all of that is, last year, you recognized a $1.2 million ARPA, the ARPA Fund Grant. That was the American Recovery Plan Act. Those were the COVID funds that the federal government passed out like chocolates. And so you recognized about $1.2 million of that last year, and so you didn't have that this year. Expenditures increased by about 3.6%, and the vast majority of that's that $7.7 million in capital expenditures this year. And the city has a self-imposed fund balance target of about 30%. You want 30% of your expenditures to be in your fund balance. That would require the city to have a fund balance of about $8 million. You have a fund balance of about $24.7 million, so that's about 90% of your expenditures compared to your 30% goal. This is just revenues and expenditures, so you see right at about $26.2 million in revenues and $27.3 million expenditures. You see the 7.7 I've talked about ad nauseam in the capital outlay there, and the net income, about right at a $1 million loss under. So again, you save up, you spend, and you save up and you spend. Revenues by source, total revenues right at $26.3 million, again, a 5.3% decrease. Licenses and permits, up about $100,000. There is more some timing issues with some payroll tax things. I think last year's was up really high. This year's, that decreased a little bit, so that, just a very small growth there. Your property taxes, down to about $4.9 million, down about $143,000. You lowered your tax rate. That makes not perfect sense. Your charges for services at $1.3 million, up about $300,000, about 29%. The intergovernmental at $1.1 million, down to $1.3 million. Again, you recognized almost 1.3 in ARPA funds in the prior year. And interest at $977,000, down about $137,000 as your interest at the banks has decreased slightly. Total expenditures at $27.3 million, again, about a 3% increase, up about $956,000. Capital outlay at 7.7, obviously your largest. Police at $7.5 million, up about $662,000, about a 10% increase. Fire and EMS at $5.6 million, down about $76,000, about a 1% decrease. Public Works, about $2.9 million, down about $387,000, about 11% decrease. And general government, general government, about $3.7 million, up about $382,000. And the final slide, this is your budget to actual. So you show you originally had about a $35 million of budgeted amounts available for appropriation. That includes the $14 million at the top, so it's $20.5 million of income plus $14 million of reserve that you brought forward. You actually brought 19 forward. You had 21, almost $22 million that came in for a $41 million available for appropriation. So you had about 1.3 So you had about $1.3 million more available, or $1.4 million that you received more than budget, and about six more available than you, than you budgeted. So as far as budget for appropriations for revenues, phenomenal budgeting there. For charges, you budgeted about $20.7 million out, you actually expended about 19.1, so about $1.5 million under budget to the positive. And that's, that's just the general fund, that's the most significant fund of the city. That's my presentation. Any questions or anything that I can answer?
It's not necessarily for you, but can we get a digital copy of this? And of, are we able to get a digital copy of this as well? Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm supposed to tell, I'm supposed to say that. Kara told me to say that. So, yeah, this is a, somebody bothered, somebody took vacation over Thanksgiving, and so these were, I didn't get these made into finals for tonight's meeting, so, sorry. The draft, we'll have it as a final probably this week.
I'd just like to, in case there's something I wanted to search for later, sometimes it's a lot easier to search in an electronic form than it is to try to go through the paper.
Yeah, we provide a PDF copy of both.
Any other questions for John? Okay, great. Thank you so much, John. I appreciate it. I just want to take a moment, I mean, I think you celebrated Kara and Chrissy, but I, I want to extend my gratitude to you guys. The level of effort that you put into the finances and, I mean, the transparency, the accountability, the attention to detail, you are extraordinary at your job. We are so incredibly blessed to have you, and Chrissy has been a phenomenal addition to your team, and you are a great leader to her and your entire team, so, well done. Thank you. All right. All right. Next on the agenda is comments from the public. Chris Herman. How you doing today?
Good, how are you doing?
Very good, good to see you.
I'd like to start by saying, as I always do, thank you for allowing this time for people to come and speak. I think it's great to have this time. I would like to draw your attention to something that happened at the Joint Interim Committee on Local Government down in Frankfurt about two Thursdays ago. Representative TJ Roberts, who represents part of Boone County, put a bill forward, a very simple bill, it's about six sentences, two bullet points, that would require all county and local police departments to create a, what is called a joint, or to create a task force model agreement with Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. And the bill, as it stands, and as Representative Roberts is wanting right now, would require all over 400 local police departments and 120 county sheriff's departments into this agreement. I'm going to level with you. I am here to ask for this city council and this city to publicly disavow this bill as many bad things that it does. Point one, it takes away local autonomy of the cities of the counties, and it forces them into this program whether they want it or not. Two, I foresee that if this bill passes, and I think it will, that it will lead to a rather large degradation of the confidence and trust that people place within their police departments, because Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, their popularity is plummeting fast. And if the police departments are forced to make agreements with them, I fear that the people of Kentucky and the people of even Erlanger will lose trust and lose faith in their community law enforcement, which is not a good thing for anyone to have. Also, as part of this task force model, all, up to 10 officers per department can be deputized, where they go through 40 hours of an online course that covers a multitude of topics in only 40 hours. And where every local and county police department receives $175,000 a year by the federal government, because nothing says wanting to save money like handing out $73.5 million a year to just Kentucky police departments. This, this bill is bad on so many levels. Two, I went onto a call with Representative Roberts, and he explained that this isn't saying that police officers have to go, you know, on ice raids or anything like that, but during any, as he described, community engagements or encounters, or if they pull someone over and they have reasonable suspicion, in nothing, nowhere is it given what reasonable suspicion includes. That they can ask and investigate as to the status of somebody's citizenship. That is not the place of local law enforcement, that's not their specialty, that's not their training. Even though they receive 40 hours, that's on at least 12 different topics from what I can figure out from the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement website. And as my final point, I'd like to bring up a couple of numbers, because I'm, I'm fast running out of time. There are about 14 million undocumented immigrants living in the United States. In the fiscal year of 2025, there were 8,814 undocumented immigrants convicted of a crime nationwide. That leads to a crime, a category A crimes, that leads to a category A crime rate of 0.00062. This is not a solution because of a problem, this is a solution in search of a problem that does not exist, and would openly make our population fearful of the law enforcement and distrust of them. So I will ask again, please publicly disavow this and ask the legislature to not vote on this. Thank you.
Just a quick update to council. KC-CMA, which is the Kentucky City County Manager Association, will have a legislative update tomorrow, I'm scheduled, and I'll, I'll be participating in that. So if that issue comes up or any other pertinent issues, I'll be sure to make sure council is aware of that.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Chris. All right. Mark Raleigh? If you'd like to come to the podium?
Yes, that's great. You have a document to be passed out?
Okay, sure. And then you'll just hit the little button to turn on the microphone. You'll, when you go over to the podium, just hit the button and it'll turn the microphone on. And if you could just state your name? Thank you.
Well, first of all, you know, thank you, Mayor Fetti, thank you for council for the opportunity to address you. Just to give you some background information, so my name is Mark Raleigh. I have lived in Erlanger for 28 years. I live at 307 Graves Avenue, just right down the street. My wife and I have raised four children in this community. The youngest one is still with us, he's in college, but the other older three have, have gone on their way. Needless to say, as parents, you, you know, when teenagers begin to drive, you know, there's, there's cars involved, and, and obviously, the Raleigh family has gone through a lot of cars with four different teenage drivers. I think most of you know where 307 Graves Avenue is, so we have, you know, I have cars in my driveway, and sometimes I have a car parked directly across from, from my house. So I'm here today to try to, you know, get a resolution to a problem that has occurred. And I just want you to know that I have spoken to the police, that went nowhere. All I got was a very black and white answer about ordinances. And I did call the city building, asking for someone to call me back. It's, and it's been 48 hours since that call was made. So I'm here tonight, again, working, trying to work through to get a resolution to this problem. So the document that I provided for you, on the first page you can see, which is, and I've highlighted for you, which is kind of ironic, that I was given a courtesy notice, and I want to emphasize the word courtesy, it really wasn't a courtesy when you impound somebody's car. So I did receive a courtesy notice from the Erlanger Police Department. I did try to resolve that once I found out that my car had been impounded. If you will turn this form over, you will see, and my family was blessed, you know, my oldest son lives in California, he turned 30, we went to Hawaii. So on the day the citation or courtesy notice was given to me, you can see that I was departing CVG at 7:00 AM. So I was already gone out of town on November 20th, prior to the citation being given to my car. And then you can see, I arrived back in town on Thanksgiving Day. The flight got in a little bit after 6:00, it was after 7:00 before we got home. And of course, if you've ever been, if you've ever flown from Honolulu to CVG, it's a long flight. So we got home, my son did notice the flyer, but we were tired, and so we went to bed for a couple of hours because we had family, you know, engagements for Thanksgiving. I walk outside, and I find that my car is gone. So my car has been impounded by the Erlanger Police Department. I will have to say, I think it's very mean-spirited to impound somebody's car on Thanksgiving Day. I mean, if they would have just waited a little longer, I would have taken care of the situation. I didn't even know about the situation until I got home on Thanksgiving Day. And then the police department, again, seized, took, stole, whatever term you want to use, my vehicle. And so I would like for my vehicle to be returned, and I'm trying to work my way through this resolution, through the, through the normal chains, the normal processes to come to a resolution, because I don't feel like I've been treated fairly. You know, I've been a good citizen of this community for 28 years, I pay my taxes, I don't cause problems, I've raised soon-to-be four, you know, quality kids that are going to add value to our world. And, you know, I'm an educator, I've been an educator for 34 years, I don't know if this was one of my former students, and they're like, okay, we're going to stick it to Mr. Raleigh. But, again, I don't, I don't feel like I've been treated equitably, fairly, and it's very disappointing. And so I'm coming to you tonight, asking for your help. If you can't help me directly, I don't mind going through the appeals process, the grievance process, those are normal things in any situation. Like I said, I work for a school district, been, been with that school district for over 20 years. I've been a teacher, a counselor, a principal, and I work in a district capacity. And I work kind of in a student services lens right now. And this isn't how we do business. If, if I have a truant student, and that parent, that parent gets noted, gets notified, we send a three-day letter, a four-day letter, a six-day letter. We call, we make home visits. We don't just automatically slap you with a letter and then haul you into court, you know, a few days later. You know, there's a system in place, and we try to do things, you know, in my mind, correctly. And I don't feel like this situation was handled correctly at all. I think it was mean-spirited, I think it was very lazy, to be frank, as far as I'm concerned with the police department. They gave a courtesy notice, I'm not even in town, they can run my plates, they can find my phone number. They didn't call my house, they didn't call my cellphone, they didn't knock on the door, leave a hanger. I have lots of, you know, friends on Graves Avenue that would be willing to help me out. They could act, get into my home, they could have moved my car. You know, I, like most of my neighbors, but I could guess who this person probably was, you know, and that's fine. It's, you know, it's fine, they can complain, we all, we all can complain. I'm not necessarily trying to complain, I'm trying to right a wrong. And I would appreciate your assistance with correcting this situation, and I would like my property returned. So again, thank you for your time. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a quick question, only because it says on here, third-party complaint of overtime parking. Was it, and maybe you don't know, when we can ask the police if we need to, but was it a situation where it was, do you know if the violation was, that it was parked more than 24 hours? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Like I said, we've had multiple and multiple cars, and cars are parked on the street, cars are parked in our, in our, you know, we have a, a single driveway, you know, so, you know, it's, it's hard when people work and go to school, and you can't put every car in the driveway, and so it's easy just to park on the street. So yes, we leave cars on the street more than 24 hours, but it's never been, it's never been an issue. And, you know, I don't, again, part of the issue I know is timing, but again, you know, I feel like they could have made a better effort to address the issue if it was, if it was that concerning, you know? If, if everything is that black and white, and Erlanger follows every ordinance violation to the book, then fine, but I know that doesn't happen. Like I said, I just would like to be treated equitably, equitably, fairly, and I would like a resolution to this issue, and I would like my car returned.
So we have a leadership meeting tomorrow, we always meet after these meetings, so we'll discuss it with the police chief and get a better understanding of what happened. Just for council's benefit, and I'm not swaying one way or the other, I mean, we do have an ordinance in place that you can't park on a street for over 24 hours, but we'll certainly dig into tomorrow, what notice you were given, and, and the perspective of the police, and somebody will get back to you tomorrow, okay?
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raleigh. Okay. Kelly Pierce and Jennifer Wire?
Hi. Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Wehe, and this is Kelly Pierce. Thank you, was it Shelley? Who, Susan? Who was it that? Sherry. Sherry, thank you for, thank you for inviting us and letting us come speak tonight. My name is Jennifer Wehe, I'm a supervisor with the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. I run one of the foster care and adoption teams here in Northern Kentucky out of Kenton County. And we have just been going to different city councils, talking to the representatives on the need for foster and adoptive parents in the community and raise awareness. So I just wanted to go over some information with you, won't take too much of your time, we have some goodies that Kelly's going to pay us out for you guys, and we'll leave some more information back here. A lot of the different cities that we have spoke at, this is probably like our, I'm going to say like our fifth or sixth one, we've just, we have done presentations, we've left flyers, they've posted some of the flyers on your website. They've allowed us to do various things and have done articles on foster care and adoption. If you guys have like city newsletters that go out to the, to the citizens, that kind of thing, so that's what we're giving you, just some goodies and stuff like that. But I just wanted to go over just some information real quick. So we are housed, we cover all top 12 counties of Northern Kentucky, but our office is located in Kenton County in Latonia. And so, right now, just to give you guys some more numbers, I feel like there's been a lot of numbers thrown out tonight in regards to various things, but as of, these are stats from October 1st. So statewide, we have 8,678 children in Northern Kentucky, or sorry, in foster care. And in Northern Kentucky, which is those top 12 counties, we have 1,220 children in foster care. Right here in our own backyard of Kenton County, there are 432 children in foster care that are needing homes, that are in out-of-home care. So we, the Cabinet for Health and Family Services, Department for Community-Based Services, we have, in Kenton County, I'm just giving you Kenton County stats since that's where we're at, we have 74 DCBS foster parents, and then we have 67 private childcare agency foster parents, such as like NECO, SAFI, Benchmark, those, some other ones, Diocesan's Catholic Children Homes, so different things like that, that we partner with. As you can see by the numbers, that doesn't equal the amount of children that we have in Kenton County alone, to cover the amount of foster homes that we need. So just some other information, and I do have this on a PowerPoint, I apologize, we didn't send it to you to share, but I could send that to you, Sherry, afterward, or tomorrow, I can have Kelly Pierce send that to you. I can have Kelly Pierce send that to you. In Northern Bluegrass, in our region, we have various children, you know, that come into foster care for various reasons of abuse, neglect, dependency. And right now, we have from zero to five-year-olds is 370, ages six to 12 is two, is 321. And teenagers aged 13, 18 is 342. So as you can tell, we only have 267 DCBS foster homes here in Northern Kentucky. And private childcare foster homes, we have 252. So we're only meeting about 85% of our need for foster homes for children. The majority of foster homes that we approve these days are called our relative affective caregiver. So that's where a child, like, we are mostly approving like grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, affective kin, like teachers, coaches, your bus drivers, things like that, to become certified foster parents, to help taking children so that they don't, so they can be placed with families who are known to them, instead of unknown, into like a foster home where the parents are unknown. So that's what a relative affective kin caregiver foster home is. We, to the definition of affective kin, is a close family member or others with a strong relationship to the child, not biologically related, but recognized as like part of the child's support network. And then for children, for babies, infants, zero to 12 months, they must have had a prior relationship with a child prior to placement, or the biological parent. We also have a huge need for not only relative affective kin caregivers, but also foster care. Your non-familial homes? Okay, yeah, so, sorry about that. And so I just wanted to let you know, but we have, we offer trainings throughout the whole, throughout the whole year. And just wanted to really touch on the need for foster care and adoption. We have kiddos who are unfortunately sleeping in our offices, where we are unable to place them. And so I just wanted to bring that to your all's attention, just to raise awareness. And there are some goodies, or some information that was handed out here and other ways to help, such as, you know, donate, you know, donate goods to, for children in care. And just to help us spread the word, put in a news article, that type of thing, share these on your, on your city website. So I just wanted to say thank you guys so much for your time, if anybody has any questions. And we'll leave some additional information for the public back here.
Yeah, and if you, oh, excuse me, if you sent over the PowerPoint that you have?
Yes.
We can utilize some of the graphics and information?
Oh, perfect.
On our social media, that's not a problem at all.
Oh, that's awesome, thank you.
And then, are you familiar with our police social services coordinator, Mary Ann Moore?
Yes.
Okay.
Each city usually has one.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if you needed her contact information, if you had any kind of issues or needed any assistance in the city of Erlanger. She is a huge support system to our police officers and our fire, and she's kind of a second responder in these types of situations. So if you wanted to be connected with her, we can make that happen.
Oh, yeah, perfect. No, I mean, I do know who you're talking about. Each city usually has a social worker liaison that works between the Cabinet DCBS and the police, so yes. But I would be glad to give her my information if we needed, if she needed to talk to me about foster care adoption.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you all for coming. I am a former foster parent and adoptive parent, so this is something that's very, very near and dear to my heart. My son's 21 now. But I wanted to note that I did actually send the mayor a request on October 8th to do a mayoral proclamation for National Adoption Month. And I'm going to share one more statistic that you didn't share. But there's approximately 650 children in the state of Kentucky each year that age out of foster care without a permanent family. And that is heartbreaking to me. So I had requested that this be brought some attention. I did not receive a response to that. So I appreciate you all coming tonight and sharing all these statistics with us and bring light to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
All right, that concludes fellow comment. All right, the mayor's report. Just one thing that I'd like to talk about tonight was the Erlanger Business Council Holiday Social over at the Hive, and there were about 60 people in attendance. This was the second gathering of the Erlanger Business Council. So it was a pretty spectacular turnout. And I think we were the beginning of their holiday social calendar. So they've got quite a few others, Florence, Fort Thomas, and Newport Business Councils are going to be having their holiday socials as well. So thank you for everybody that attended, and I hope, I hope there's more people next time. Cool. All right, Mark Collier?
Thank you, mayor. I'll be quick, we have great things happening in the city of Erlanger. Friday, we have the tree lighting ceremony, just to remind council, that is this Friday, at the city building from 6:00 to 8:00, carolers, cookie decorations, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there. That kind of parlay's into the next week. Make sure if you want to be in the holiday decorating contest, you do so by December 12th. There will be volunteers judging, and there are poinsettias as the prizes this year. But let's be real, it's about bragging rights, so show your stuff, Erlanger. At the Depot Museum, we have a couple of cool things happening right now. The holiday train exhibit is happening right now, that is on loan, the whole train setup, it's awesome, by Andrew Wortman and the Allied Rail Corporation. So the depot looks awesome right now, Sherry and her team are helping facilitate that, it looks great. They are also doing a toy drive collection that's happening between December 1st and the 12th. You can drop by the toys at the museum during the museum hours, check the website for that information. We also have a box right outside with Clark Griswold. If you have non-working Christmas lights and you want to drop them off to be recycled, you can do so in the lobby, right in the city building during open, normal hours. And we will help recycle those. And finally, just a shout-out, we did have our first winter event this morning, and our Public Works team and our Weather Warriors did an awesome job clearing that. So just want to give a public shout-out to Kevin Quinn and his team for getting our streets clear. That is all I have for the administrator report.
Thank you, Mark. All right. Jack, city attorney's report? All right. Back to Mark, Capitol Projects, and any reports from the department heads?
Capitol Projects, a few things to update for Deer Tree, Deer Chase, Thorn Tree, Sky Drive, Reglar Blacktop had a completion date of November the 30th, all is finished on that. That includes ADA ramps, all intersections. The weather is providing a little bit of a hurdle for us. They are losing staff for the season, they asked to push that milling and new asphalt to the spring. So we will continue that in spring of 2026 to finish that project. The Narrows Road sidewalks, that is in design phase. And I believe that's being finalized with easements that Jack is working on currently. Concord Drive project with the Water District. The Water District still has a contractor, that's Independence Paving, they're doing spot repairs. There were some quality issues due to, you know, some of the stuff that they were doing. Our contractor is slated to start on that project in early spring of 2026. Eons, the Dog Park, Jefferson Contract has finished the parking lot and intersection. They have a few punch list items to finish up, and Phase 1 will be complete. That takes us over to the LeGrand Fence, they are also doing work in and around Eons. The fence is complete, the contractor will be back in the spring to paint that when weather temperature goes up a little bit. No updates on the Locust Street, that's still in update. We did talk about that at the Parks Task Force, as well as the SD-1 project on Misty Creek. No update from last council meeting there, that's all I have on this.
Thank you, Mark. All right, any reports from task forces?
I just wanted to remind everybody, there would not be a beautification task force meeting in December. We will resume in January, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hermes?
Yes, thank you, mayor. We had a Parks Task Force meeting this evening, and I wanted to let people know that the next task force meeting will be January 6th. And we plan on doing that at Eons Park. So we're going to start a little bit earlier than normal, at 5:00 on January 6th. And that'll be kind of a walkthrough, what's been done and what's planned there in Eons. It should be a fun meeting.
All right, thank you. All right. Sorry? All right, Mr. Collier?
One bid opening in November, and that was for the fencing at the Dog Park paddocks. Three bids were received, we did take the low bid on that, that is LeGrand Fence. We had done projects with them before. So that project will be awarded to LeGrand Fence. That is all, mayor.
Thank you. All right, any unfinished business? Okay, any new business? All right, legislation, Jack?
Yeah, first, first we have an ordinance, amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance, removing a requirement that all new dwelling units must have at least one attached detached garage within the RMF, which is the residential multifamily zone. This went in front of PDS and the Planning Commission, and was recommended by the Planning Commission based on testimony heard October 2nd, 2025. You can see, "Attached" is the document which would show that we are removing the requirement. You can see it on page 3 of the Attachment A, that we are striking out the X, meaning we are removing the requirement of a detached garage in the RMF zone. This is a second reading.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance? As read, Ms. Rutgers, Ms. Jasper Lucas, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rutgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fields?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried.
Hi, next we have an ordinance submitting the zoning map of the city of Erlanger, county of Kenton, changing an area of approximately 45.03 acres, located on the north side of Dolwith Drive, between Crescent Springs Road to the east and Turfway Road to the west, approximately one mile west of Crescent Springs Road in Erlanger, from BP Business Park Zone to RMF, multifamily residential zone. Again, this was in front of the Kenton County Planning Commission, there was a public hearing on October 2nd. It was recommended by the Kenton County Planning Commission. There are several bases for it, one is that the proposed map amendment is generally in agreement with comprehensive plan. The submitted concept and development plan meets all minimum requirements. And also, it was based on the need for additional multifamily properties, and based on the testimony provided at the October 2nd, 2025 public hearing. This also is a second reading.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read, Ms. Rutgers? Mr. Farmer, any discussion? Yes.
I'm going to be abstaining from this vote. I, three years ago, I've already said this a couple of times, I just want to reiterate, that three years ago, we took multifamily housing out of the permitted uses, and I didn't understand it then. And I'm uncomfortable with how we got here, so that is why I'm abstaining.
All right, roll call vote?
Ms. Fields?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rutgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Ms. Jasper Lucas, I'll write down as abstaining. Mr. Farmer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried.
Hi, next we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the mayor's appointment of Nick Eads as Director of Economic Development, Assistant City Administrator pursuant to KRS 83080, Section 3, in our ordinance. Oh. I don't know what else to say.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read, Mr. Hermes and Ms. Rutgers? Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Congratulations, Nick, I know you're watching.
Hi, next we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of Noah Osterhag and Eric Rolf as members of the Board of Adjustments for the city of Erlanger. These terms will begin on January 5th, 2026. It's just as crazy that that's only a month away, isn't it? And continue until the first Monday in January 2030.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mr. Hermes, Mr. Farmer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Next we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of Vicky Kyle and Tom Montell as members of the Urban Forest Commission for the city of Erlanger. Again, these terms will run from January 1, 2026, to December 31st, 2028.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read, Ms. Rutgers? Ms. Fields, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next we have a municipal order of the city council of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of Mayor Jessica Fetti as the representative of the city to the Planning and Development Services of Kenton County PDS, and the reappointment of council member Tyson Hermes as the alternate effective January 1, 2026. This is a one-year term.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read, Ms. Rutgers? Mr. Farmer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next we have a municipal order of the city council of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of Mayor Jessica Fetti as the representative of the city of the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, OKI Regional Council of Governments, effective January 1, 2026. This also is a one-year term.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mr. Hermes? Mr. Farmer, any discussion? Yes.
I will be voting no on this, because the mayor hasn't attended any meeting, according to the minutes of OKI for the last two years. And I think we should appoint someone who actually wants to attend the meetings.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, any announcements? All right, seeing none, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Mr. Hermes, Ms. Rutgers, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried, have a good evening.